All right. I call this Wednesday, September 27th, 2023 meeting of the Grafton Mass Board of Library Trustee's to order. Welcome, everyone. Long time you'll see.
Hello.
Welcome back. And I will mention that we have a very packed agenda tonight. We have numerous items, so I'll rein my own self in, but also invite everyone else to exercise some restraint and plow through these things. Meaningful discussion is absolutely welcome, but you know, we need to really move things along to get things under what have typically been running around two hours. So what I'm going to do is, the first item on the agenda was going to be the minutes, but I'm going to take out of order new business item 5A, welcoming new staff member Shannon Phelan. So, welcome.
I just wanted to.
If you could just sit down and speak into the mic so all the thronics of people when it's on playback can hear you.
Thank you so much for inviting me to come and introduce myself. I'm Shannon Phelan, and I've been working at the library as a temp since about April, maybe. And I absolutely love it. I started out in the children's room, and now I'm kind of floating between teen and borrower services everywhere. So, thanks for the opportunity to help out, and it's been great.
Awesome. Anyone have any comments or questions?
I know she's amazing. She's like, very detail oriented. She can't sit still, which is good, because there's always something to do.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And we'll go any department, work anywhere, which is a little tricky for some people. Some people prefer certain departments, and she's willing to.
That's a really welcome skill set.
Yeah, very, very helpful.
Thank you so much.
What was your background before you decided to come to the library?
I've been an environmental consultant for about 20 years, and now I have my own work from home business where I do peer review for other consultants. So, I had extra time, and the library was my happy place, and I just, I love the people there, and I still do, and it's just been a great match for my skills, I think.
Awesome. Well, welcome aboard. Thanks for coming.
Can I just say quickly, she helped me last night very much. We were trying to do a merge, a mail merge that was not really working, although it should have been. So, we figured it out. She figured it out, Shannon did.
Awesome.
Well, I'm not gonna quit my day job to do that. It did take us a while, but we did. We figured it out.
Yes, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Approval of minutes. August 23rd, 2023 draft minutes. I will accept a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
I make a motion to approve the August 23rd, 2023 minutes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All right. And I didn't. All right. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving next to the August 30th, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 30th minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Do I have any discussion on the motion? I had one quick question. This seems to be on my printed copy on 2B, the third bullet point that says, "Questions were raised," and then it says, "Exhibits most of which focus on," and then the sentence disappears. And I don't know whether that was my printer doing that, or whether that was a document. Does anyone else?
Which one is it again?
Policy update 2B, third bullet point. There's a sentence that starts with, "Questions were raised and answered," and I noticed today that the sentence is incomplete, but that may have been my own printer doing that. It's been known to do that. And so, I didn't know if that sentence continued. So, does anyone have the electronic copy of that?
Right now.
I see that.
It ends with "on."
Okay, so what was that supposed to continue saying?
No, it says exhibits most of which focus on, and then there's nothing else.
So, are we in agreement that absent guessing what that said, that we maybe end that sentence with installation and removal of exhibits without qualifying what they focus on?
It was around, I believe it was around staffing, and who's responsible for climbing ladders, hanging things, who has to be present in the building, do frontline staff do it, no, it's town custodial who directs them.
So, would we say staffing assistance?
Yeah, staffing issues, I would say.
Okay. All right. So, are we all on board to correct that, to end with staffing issues? All right. Unanimous consent. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approving bills. There are warrants 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. And do I have a motion to approve warrant number nine in the amount of $2,838.16 with the source of funds as contained in the meeting packet?
So moved.
All right. Motion made. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Do I have any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. All right. Next is warrant number 10. Do I have a motion to accept warrant number 10 in the amount of $4,468.69 with the source of funds as contained in the packet?
So moved.
So moved by Aaron. Do I have a second?
Second.
Our motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. All right. Warrant number 11. Do I have a motion to accept and fund warrant number 11 in the amount of $1,342.23 as funded by the sources contained in the packet?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Warrant number 12. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number 12 in the amount of 3,000, oh pardon, it was at $5,128.46 with the funding sources as contained in the packet?
So moved.
All right. Motion made, seconded?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Do I have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Warrant number 12. Do I have a motion to approve warrant number 12, pardon, warrant number?
13.
13, pardon. All right, my typo. Do I have a motion to accept warrant number 13 and pay it in the amount of $3,680.46 with the source of funds as contained in the packet?
So moved.
Okay. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do I have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Okay. All right. Beth, grant updates for MPLCP. I always forget what that stands for, but fill us in again.
Sure. Mass, Massachusetts, Public Library Construction Program Grant. So, that's the 7.4 million that we got from Mass Board of Library Commissioners for the building. Construction team did not meet this week. It was John Kipor. We met beginning of September as Building Committee to pay bills. They were made aware of the flooding that happened. There was not recommendation or action. We still have a couple of things outstanding, some of which were pulled out of the project, like a sign that needs to go on the common entrance directing people with any accessibility issues around to the accessible entrance off the parking lot.
So, they pulled that, or is that going to be included?
Yeah, I think that the sign company decided they were done, and then they pulled out of the contract. So, they had to, yeah, do it separately. I believe they'll be coming to Capital Campaign or Building Committee. I'm not sure.
So, was that, is that something that someone reneged on?
I have no idea. I just know that it got taken out. I don't know why.
So, who's they? Like, who took what out? I'm confused.
The architectural, the signage company who did most of the exterior and interior signage, decided they were done with their work at some point, and they didn't finish the sign.
So, the contact?
It was two years ago.
All right. So, when did they last, so they last?
I last saw them the end of 2021 to do the interior signage, and they did the exterior sign and the number above the building.
So, have they gotten paid for work not performed?
No. No.
Oh. Oh, okay.
No. It was a change order. It got taken out of the contract.
Okay. So, now what?
So, now they had to have a design for the sign approved by, I think Historic District Commission and Accessibility Commission. And once that's all approved, which my understanding is it has been approved, then they need to come up with construction documents to make the sign.
Okay.
And then they'll give it, I presume to me, and then I'll be looking for funding to make the sign.
Estimated?
I have no idea.
You don't know? 5,000, 2,000, 1,000?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
I can find out for you.
Was it probably 1,000, maybe 2,000?
For exterior sign?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's still outstanding.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
So, okay, so it was two years ago that they finished up. So, has this just been on the bucket list? Like, was it raised previously, and it's just been?
We've been discussing it for months, and months, and months, and trying to get the design and the approval. And first, it was two legs, and then it was four legs, and then it was two legs again, and now it's four legs with a slant again. And then they changed the design.
But once this is done, I can't imagine it's gonna take a whole bunch of time to install. All right. And then we'll advertise it, and people will notice it, put on social media. Okay. Any other construction updates?
We did the final walkthrough for HVAC, and there were a bunch of recommendations, but I'm not clear what next steps are if the commissioning company, Colliers, has recommendations. Like, I don't know if that then falls to the construction team to remediate things that they suggested, or if it's just a, yep, it's working, you can apply for your LEED certification, and we're all set.
So, is there a written report of that inspection?
I believe I sent that out. If you don't have it, I can send it again. We've been having a lot of email issues with our change to outlook.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a good eight or 12 pages.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. And I know those are ongoing issues, and?
Unfortunately, they were not able to track down the squeaking and squealing and clanking noises that we continue to hear throughout the building when the HVAC or plumbing system
I still say it's a poltergeist.
No.
That's concentrated to one part of the building.
John and I were there. It was awesome. It was, I finally heard it.
Oh, you did?
Oh, it was crazy.
What does it sound like?
From the staff room? It sounds like somebody just took a balloon and just pushed all the air out all at once.
Loud kazoo. I've heard it described as.
But from the staff room? Where were you? No, it's right above, like, outside Beth's office where all the adult stacks are. Just right above there. You can kind of see it. It almost looks like this.
Yeah. So, we heard it from several areas. The gentleman, I think his name was Evan, who came from Colliers, said it could even be a plumbing thing. It might not be HVAC. Like, it could be every time the toilet flushes, like the staff bathroom toilet flushes. So, now I was sort of being vigilant about, well, is there someone in the restroom? Is that what's causing it? I don't think so. I really do think it's HVAC.
All right.
But I still make you know, I mean, it's running.
Yep. So, sign, HVAC, and anything else?
Doors. We were waiting for someone from Chandler to come and look at particularly emergency exit doors all around the building, especially post-flooding, because we'd had some feedback that there were wrong bolts and rusted bolts in the teen room emergency exit door that was stopping the gasket from dropping down, which is why water was leaking at that location. Remember, when it flooded, it did not leak there. It leaked on the other four emergency exits where the gaskets do appear to go all the way down. But they were gonna have someone from the door installation company.
Did he come today? He came late today. I didn't get to talk to him. I didn't know he was coming.
Me either. No one spoke to me.
No, I, he kind of came in, I guess came in, looked around, and left. I don't, I don't know. No one.
Well, I'm looking forward to what the assessment was so that we can prevent this happening again. I think of not only rains, but if we get a lot of snow this winter, and we have a rain event with massive snow melt, that could also, you know, create an issue. So, I look forward to seeing what their assessment was and what the next steps and timeline are. I would hate to have us facing this again.
Well, yeah. And then I continue, this is further down on the agenda, but I do continue to bring to the construction team's attention the gutter issue that we're having by the patron book drop. The architect has now provided a suggestion for a design feature that we can add to the roof that might help mitigate that water. So, I reached out to a couple roofing companies, because that's like, I think considered outside scope of project, unless the town decides that they would like to go after the construction company for what they feel might be inappropriate.
I think Dana had a question.
The thing, this is very helpful, but I guess the piece I'm trying to understand is, so Beth, so she's responsible for all this stuff because she's the director?
Yep.
If we had a facilities manager, would they be helping with some of this?
Yep.
Okay. So, my understanding is, let me ask you this.
Because this is an incredible amount of work.
It is. It is. And I'm wondering, has, I know that since the flood and even on that day, has William Blake taken on a more active role regarding facilities than he previously had?
He's not a facilities manager.
No, I know that, but I'm saying, as far as, as far as contact with any of the vendors or help, helping facilitate, not facilities, but facilitate some of the mechanics of getting things done.
So, he's the person kind of in charge of the flood mitigation and remediation, because he's the, you know, person who contacts the town insurance and gets SERPRO involved, and I assume contracted with Preserve 24, who's gonna come in and mediate. I believe, he did check in. I don't know, he wasn't on site to meet them first thing. Custodial was one morning. Another morning, a staff member let them in. He checked in, I think, Tuesday afternoon to see how things were going. He's been on top of it, but like, if I were going to say, "I need a roofing company," who should I call? I wouldn't, I wouldn't reach out to William. I would go with Bob Berger in the Building Maintenance Department, and he's usually supportive and helpful, but also, he's got his own work to do, and he's not able to take on my work and get three, you know, three quotes so that we can go out to bid if we need to do an extensive amount of work. So, that falls to me, but town would continue to support.
Okay.
But for day to day, no, it's, you know, I'm the de facto facilities manager, is the director, and the facility has tripled in size.
And I share your frustration. I share your frustration with her frustration. It is an unenviable position to be in.
It's just hard to manage everything.
Right.
To do the regular director work and expanded IT and all of the facility stuff. And, you know, I guess I naively thought, well, construction project will be done. And it's just, it's been two years, and it's just more than two years. It's just not done, and there's new issues. And now a new capital project where we're taking on with the cupola, this new issue with drainage. So, it's a lot.
All right. You had a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. So, I actually had a chance to meet with William Blake, and he did explain, so, you know, as you said, he is, you know, kind of managing the remediation for the flooding. So, my understanding is that SurfSafe was coming on site and, you know, was gonna be removing the damaged areas. MISA, the insurance company, would be subcontracting for the repairs, is what he told me. But my understanding from him was that they would be remediating the damage, but not kind of proactively providing a solution for the doors. So, we really need to take on, like, we need to look at, we need to investigate solutions to either replace the doors or remediate the existing doors, get, you know, cooling for that, so that we aren't in the situation again if there is, you know, future flooding.
Yeah. It could be that the doors are not the only issue, though. So, one of the things that I'm pursuing is, is there mulch inside of the underground drainage system that created a blockage and didn't allow water to flow in the three drains and into the storm basin, and blocked it up, creating a pool which then pushed against the gaskets with so much pressure that they gave way. So, DPW has not been available to come and do that drain sneaking for us. So, I've now reached out to another company, but they've had so many projects, including other municipalities, that they, they were supposed to come out Labor Day weekend, and it's the end of September. So, now I need to find another different company. It's a septic company who can come, and basically, I said, it's a colonoscopy for the building, where they're gonna take a camera and look through, and then see if they need to push things out or suck out whatever's blocking. And that might not even be the issue.
Does this come, fall into F2 in the ongoing business?
This is drainage.
A little bit, yeah.
I mean, yeah. I mean, I guess a bigger picture question that relates to the grant is, was the building not appropriately designed for the time and the weather? And I would say, it's, the design was 2017, and we did the best we could at the time with the information that they had, and it should have been sufficient. And we had different weather patterns, and for whatever reason, it's not.
Yes. I would just add two things from the Building Committee. One is, with the doors, I mean, both the architect and the OPM pretty much said that they're designed to prevent water from going in, but not standing water. So, the fact that it was standing water there, you don't expect those doors to hold all of that out. So, we did talk about the idea of putting like a sandbag around it. You know, like, I think we talked about that in the last meeting, where you put those sandbag around it, and so that stops the water. But you'd obviously have to make sure that the doors can still open for any graphs. And then, there was a question about just the design of the stormwater management system, and was it designed to carry that much water out? It was a pretty generic answer, but, you know, they have design specifications based on, you know, what they expect in New England, and that's what they did. I mean, that's what the architect told us.
I had a quick question, hopefully. I didn't get to see the mulched area where I think Peral came in and like redid everything with the stones and everything. So, it looks really good now, but do we know how bad it was before? Like, was it, did it seem obvious, like, that there was just mulch covering the drain? Does anyone?
There was mulch, and then there was like construction mesh still, which I don't know if the mesh was supposed to have been removed, or if the mesh was supposed to have prevented things from falling into the drain. Like, that's not clear to me. There was never a walkthrough or explanation.
Yeah, Debbie, you?
The area that Pearl just did, you're talking about the, it's in the front.
Yeah.
No, I think he's talking about the back, where Beth had asked him.
Yeah.
Beth asked him to put stones around it, and they cleared it.
They had one where they had rocks. So, I asked them, can you just do that? It was about an 18-inch diameter to prevent the mulch from getting into the drain, and they just immediately went and got two buckets of rocks.
So, if I could interrupt, right now, we're on 3A, but we've sort of morphed into 3F, and then 4B. And so, for the construction, do you have any other?
I do. That, our construction representative that we've been, has been assigned to the library for five years is retiring, Lauren Starr from MBLC. So, her last day, I believe, is October 1st, and I'm trying to finish the July, September reports for her, and she does want that walkthrough. So, our list serve has not been working. I will send it out when I get back to my desk tomorrow morning for you all to take a look at. It is about eight pages, and it contains things like, we asked for this in the building program, and we didn't get it. So, that's coming.
So, is that a report that you have due to her?
Yeah.
Okay. And when's the deadline on that?
There isn't one. She was supposed to give it to me a year after occupancy.
And she's leaving when?
She's leaving October 1st.
All right. Okay, that's.
She'll have time to. I mean, she's seen a draft of it, and she came and had a tour, and we did a walkthrough, so she's aware.
So, we can wrap this up, then?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay.
Yeah. And then the final report will be due, and the financial report will be due next, like, April, so that we get our next reimbursement. So, I've already started working on the pieces that we need, but until we do that final payment to CTA Construction and say we're done, and have a letter from the town saying we're done, it's still an open construction project.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to, for your update on Mass Historic, MHC?
Yeah. So, we did get funding approval from, I hope I remember all these acronyms, CPC for $74,114. It went to Finance Committee to, because it's on the town meeting, Warren. It'll be voted on at town meeting on the 16th of October. Finance Committee has a recommendation that if this board committed $109,114, it doesn't matter if CPC agreed to pay $74,114, whatever it was, that they want us to exhaust all of our funds before we start drawing on town funds.
Really?
Yes.
Including all of capital?
No, they can't.
What do you mean? No, just what we verbally commit. So, my proposal was, we don't know what money we're going to get. The original cost of the project was $218,228. They had split it in half. Hopefully, MHC will cover half, and the board has enough in state aid to cover the other half. However, this project qualifies for CPA funding.
Right.
So, let's go to CPA and say, can we do a one-third, one-third, one-third split? Because it turns out, we didn't get a 50% funding match from Mass Historic. We got $70,000, because they don't cover painting and contingency and architecture, which I wasn't aware of or missed in the fine print when I did the grant. So, when I went to CPC, I was transparent. I said, the board has the 50% match, but we don't want to deplete all of our state aid funding, because we continue to draw on it for unexpected building expenses, staffing, et cetera. We want to have, we're paying operating expenditures for the library.
And I attended, that was a Zoom meeting that I.
Yeah. So, I said, I'd be happy with anything between, I think it was like $23 or $2500.
But isn't Finance, but isn't Finance Committee then reiterating what we knew all along from Community Preservation Committee, that the CPA funds are the last funds to get expended? So, were they simply reminding us of a CPC mandate?
What I understood from my messaging from John Stevens, who attended the Finance Committee meeting, was they don't, it doesn't matter that CPC offered to fund a third, they expect the board to fund 50%, not a third, and expend all of your money in reserves.
That you committed.
Before you start to draw on CPC money. And I asked CPC, you guys make the decision for what you would like to commit. We can't afford it, but I think it's more fair to do a one-third split for each.
Right. So, here's my recommendation.
They voted $74,000.
I think that it would be important to get select board. Did you want to, did you have something? All right. I think certainly, I think it would be, it, best practice, and it's ideal when all parties are involved, okay, on the same page. Doesn't sound like Finance Committee is against the project. They're, they're getting more nuanced about the funding mechanisms. The fact that CPC has done their due diligence and really ironed out the figures, and hoping that, that select board is involved, I think the main motion would probably be made, well, the motions are actually now made all by the select board members. They rotate, that the motion on the floor would be one that would be consistent with the CPC's recommendations. I mean, I'm not saying that we should get into a battle with Finance Committee. Everyone who comes to town meeting with a proposal wants Finance Committee on their side. However, I think this has been vetted. I think it's been vetted left, right, and sideways by the CPC Committee, you know, the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, who is, who has, I think, vetted it as much as anyone. I was at that meeting. We were right here, and that thing was getting.
Two meetings.
Two meetings. And that, those figures are really being poured through, and even the contingency. And so, if, as long as Finance Committee is not against the project itself, I have no problem sort of fighting that fight and getting people on our side who really poured through those numbers. And I would hope that the public would go forward with an affirmative vote based on what the CPC recommended. And I'm surprised that Finance Committee is giving pushback, because usually, that's a rubber stamp. Not to say that Finance Committee doesn't do their due diligence. I say rubber stamping very loosely. They review things, they do their due diligence, but I'm surprised that we'd be getting pushback.
So, just for point of clarification, what exactly are you suggesting going to the select board for?
I'm selecting, I'm suggesting that the select, I think the select board, don't they also move forward with affirmative votes on whether they're approving warrant articles? I know they have historically, have historically done that. And so, what I would want is for the select board, you know, I'm not the guy that is really inviting, having, you know, pitting groups against one another, but if the Finance Committee is at an impasse regarding that which has been vetted by the CPC, I would hope that the select board would be on board with that which I thought we had come to an agreement with between, you know, Beth was at two meetings, I was at both of those meetings. CPC really crunches numbers and came up with not only an affirmative vote on the project, but the funding mechanisms, the percentages, and the sources. Now, Finance Committee? Now, finance committee is saying that they want more from us upfront. And if C P C was okay with it and we were sort of had an agreement, I'm surprised that finance committee. Made any stink and is trying to to change the numbers is what I'm saying.
So I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Board on on board with with the C P C's recommendations. Yes.
So, and I would just like to make sure that everybody has read through. It's a very long and detailed application, but please make sure that you've read through it. I can send it out again. And I really, uh, I'm hoping that you all will be at town meeting on Monday, October sixteenth.
Absolutely. What what is the application you're referring to? Is that the one that you did to get the seventy?
To get, yeah, for C P C.
Okay.
Well, C P C.
Separate application for C P A funding.
And then the other, the other monies you got was from Mass Historic.
Mass Historic Commission.
Right.
Which I think people should know that that is outstanding, the amount that we got. I reviewed that. I reviewed the, um, the grants from previous years and they weren't anywhere that I saw no grant that at that level, so.
So C P A, so the community preservation funds represent just one third of the project. And so one of the main tenets is that we leverage other funds, which we're doing to tune to two thirds. And and if if this doesn't get funded in in the amounts that it needs to, then that seventy grand from Mass Historic goes away.
It does, yeah.
So.
Can we?
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so you you just, you kind of said you wanted to go to the select board and so I wanted to be clear on what part you wanted to go.
All right, so what I want, well, yeah, I want to, I want to confirm. And I will confirm that historically, they have voted on whether to. To, uh, be in favor of various articles that are put forward. And I would want select board in our corner regarding the one third, one third, one third as C P C had agreed to. Even if finance committee is against that, it sounds like they're not against the project. They're just, they're just trying to recrunch the percentages. Yes.
So we would love to get the select board approve our warrant, but regardless, we want to put forward a warrant for town meeting.
It's on the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, it's and it's, uh, it's not ours. It's C P C because they wrote it and and it was the amount they agreed on in the meeting.
Right. And so finance committee, finance committee, uh, puts forth a recommendation, uh, for every warrant article that goes in front of the meeting.
Right, we know that.
And so.
I I so you answered the question. So I didn't realize there's already a warrant article for it or the C P C's doing it.
C P C did it. That was a big thing. They approved it.
So it's already on the warrant and and, um, it's just a matter of they'll, I don't know what the wording of the recommendation is. If they're if they're for the project, I feel a lot more comfortable that it would be, oh, and by the way, we think that it should be funded differently. But I don't know if they can even change that. I thought that the funding mechanisms, the sources and the dollar amounts. That that C P C recommended were written in stone. I I.
Well, the the warrant is either approved or not approved, right?
No, no, the the main, the the main motion is approved. In other words, and sometimes the main motion is the same as the warrant article with C P C. There's very little latitude that, uh, the public has, if any latitude to amend. Uh, the dollar amounts on town meeting.
But that's what I'm saying. It's either yes or no, right? So it's not like the finance committee can say like, so it's either going to be approved or not approved by the town.
Correct. Then those finance committees simply puts puts forth their recommendation.
Yeah.
And so what I don't understand, it's not, why are they so involved with the funding mechanism for this?
I don't know.
I mean, it just seems.
There's so much stuff for larger amounts that we rubber stamp at town meeting without a whisper. And, you know, and then, I don't know.
I don't know, and.
I I I.
I think.
Yeah, Doug.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm missing something, but so the total project is like two eighteen.
Yeah, two eighteen and.
Right.
And so the third would be, one would be C P C, one would be M H C, and then one would be the trustees.
Correct.
Approximately.
Yeah, seventy thousand, seventy four thousand, one hundred and fourteen, seventy four thousand, one hundred and fourteen.
So it's just that C P C chunk that you're referring to, finance committee. Okay, thank you.
And what Roger said is really important. M H C will not, it has to be, there has to be sharing of of the of the, um, project or we will not get that money.
Right.
So that that is a lot of money in jeopardy.
Yes.
Oh, no.
Oh, that's it. So I I, you know, I I'm hoping that, so had they put forth their recommendations? When's the deadline for their recommendations? When did they make the final vote?
I don't know. I just know they had two meetings last week.
Okay.
Um, I didn't attend.
All right, C P C.
Was made aware.
Okay, so, uh, point of order, so do we want to make a, um, a presentation or try to support the article? Um, to justify it?
Well, I I here's the thing, okay?
Yeah, Mike.
I, okay, so even if they put up a little squabble, finance committee does regarding the dollar amounts. I've I found that too much talk can sometimes be a death knell on town meeting floor.
Yeah.
Because we have about, we have about fifty warrant articles, each separate articles on the bylaw study committee. This, this is going to be one long meeting maybe. And so the less. You make, a lot of these things are so routine and the fact that one group, the finance committee, may be having a squabble over some funds. Doesn't mean you blow it into needing a big presentation or anything at all. These things are typically rubber stamped. I'm surprised that anyone's even putting up any fuss at all about this.
I think if anything, you want the C P C to speak up, like, hey, we've approved this.
Yeah, they have approved it.
Right.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, was it a, it was a unanimous vote, I think. But there was some, there was discussion and I think it was good, they had good questions and good discussions that prepared us for going to town meeting floor. So I.
I thought it was going to be a four to three vote, but they 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 had the 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 votes that I thought were going to be the three in the, uh, negative. It turned out to be a unanimous vote, so that speaks volumes.
Yeah.
And 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 I think because it's their warrant article, I think they can really speak to the merits of that. There there were folks on the C P C that. Felt very strongly not only about the project, but about the funding source, which we thought was a done deal that night. So, um, so I mean, I'll be there. I mean, you'll be there, right? I'll be there. If anyone has any questions, I, I'm gonna maybe put a niche that finance committee doesn't really make a big deal out of this. You know, I I'm hoping that they vote in the affirmative and, um. And 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 not put a roadblock to this, so.
What night is town meeting? I'm sorry.
Sixteenth of October, it's a Monday, right?
We, you, the trustees typically sit together.
Yeah, it will be posted, okay. So any other discussion on that? Are we ready to move on to F Y twenty four?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Shoot, go for it.
Uh, I'm having trouble writing reports. I just reached out to Mary Laura to get another lesson in how to run reports. Um, the only thing that I am concerned about, I had mentioned a couple of months ago, which is the copier lease. Um, I did find the original lease in conversation, which was we had, we had to sign a three year lease. We had enough money to cover two years and then had anticipated taking in money from copies and scans and faxes. Well, faxes, not scans, um, that would offset the cost of the lease. And after the pandemic, people are just not faxing like they were. Um, and printing things like they were because they can just email documents with electronic signatures. So. The money, the fund that all that money that we took in went into is becoming rapidly depleted. And I think Eileen said there's only a few hundred dollars left in it. So Debbie very kindly, and I think Eileen, um, reached out to the copy leasing company. To ask if we could buy out the lease and have them come and take the machine away because it turns out it's kind of overkill that a network printer would have been sufficient. Um, so we have a cost to buy it out, but then we own the machine, which we don't really need. And I think it was like six thousand dollars.
Aaron, you had.
Which is the cost of continuing to to lease it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not saving any money to buy it out.
Right, so I I think what what we discussed at the last meeting was, um, getting rid of rid of the lease altogether. I don't really understand why we have to buy it out, um, rather than just saying, we don't want to renew the lease, take it away.
Right.
Right? And and so I I don't think that we should pay the six grand unless we feel the library needs two copiers, right?
When does the co, when does that lease end?
We have another full year. It's like June twenty twenty four, five. Yeah.
And I I think the discussion that we had, and and Beth, correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
And and Debbie is that the library could suffice with with one copier. I know one is mainly used for staff functions and one is more for patrons. But i- is it crossing too many lines to have just one copier that can be used for staff and patrons? Is that a model that is common out of their libraries?
Yeah, I think it would be fine to have one, but the issue is we are, any contract, we're paying for it anyway. So it doesn't make sense to buy it out if it's the same cost as just continuing to pay for it and have it to use. I would say that when the lease renewal is up, we wouldn't lease two. We would lease one and at that time purchase a network printer.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, um, and, uh. I'll s- I'll say this kind of lightheartedly about social media. Um, I'm wondering if. For whatever efforts we can make either on social media or or otherwise. To really drum up public support or a reminder that this exists as a resource. Because as far as it to pay for, in other words, people pay for this, all right? I'm wondering how many people are going to Staples. I mean, is it cheaper than Staples?
Well.
I mean, so we get, I mean, if people know that in their backyard, they have access to a professional printer.
I I think you may have also heard from Shannon tonight that Dana was trying to print something and it wasn't successful in doing it on our machine at the library. I wrote into Dana at Staples today. I'm gonna out you because I had to go buy C D roms for this public records request.
No, no, it was some, it was kind of unusual. It was unusual. It was a software thing.
No, but I mean, let's let's maybe try to fight back the 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 effects of COVID. On the usage. What what have you thought of that could advertise to the public? May the, there there may be tons of people out there that would otherwise go to a professional copy center.
Sure.
That if they knew that they could competitively print at the library and not have to schlep to Shrewsbury.
Sure.
That maybe that could increase the numbers back to a point where. Even if the lease didn't pay for its, even if those fees didn't pay for itself, that we'd recoup or mitigate the losses.
The, uh, the pricing is set by the town, so we can't try to undercut.
Okay.
Any other businesses, so that may not help us.
Businesses in town or any other businesses?
So I'm saying the town sets the cost, how much it costs for a black and white print and a color print and how much for a fax.
Do you mind stating that?
Sure, it is twenty cents a page for a black and white, double sided, any size copy or print from the copier. Um, and it is fifty cents a page for color, either any size, both double sided. And for a fax, I think it, I think it's two dollars for the first page and a dollar for each additional to send and a dollar to receive. So I think that is.
Staple charges seventy nine cents because I heard someone go, ah, I'm not gonna pay that and walked out.
Uh, for black and white?
No, for color.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Seventy nine, okay, so for printing, it's, we're a little bit less expensive. So, yeah, we can certainly, but I I wasn't saying from the pandemic that people are not coming in to use the service. I'm saying the pandemic, because so many things became electronic, people do not need to print and send signed documents by fax anymore.
But I I.
Except for some benefits, which we allow for free.
But on the flip side, I know that I have had, um, I have had the opportunity to go into Staples and it is always busy.
So, um, I was just gonna say, I think that for the next year and a half that we have this lease, we have this lease. But we talk, we've talked exhaustively for years about the lack of staffing. This, for me, does not feel like where we should be directing the library personnel to invest their time. I don't think that we're going to recoup this money. I think that it's probably a futile effort to invest. The time to try and drum up that business. Whoever comes to use it in the next year and a half does. And then at that point, um, I I would be completely comfortable with only going. Or going down to renting one at that point, but I'm just not sure that that's the best use of time.
Referring to the, uh, staff resources trying to advertise and drum up business? Or are you referring to staff needing to help patrons? Is this not, is this a self-service model? Or when someone comes in to use it, it it involves a lot of staff resources?
So my understanding is right now, if somebody comes in, most of the time a staff member needs to assist them. I'm not suggesting that we take that feature away right now. I'm just suggesting that we don't ask them to try and drum up additional business. To make the cost worth it for the next year and a half, when there's other things that need to be dealt with at the library that we're struggling to meet right now. So if we just leave it status quo, if someone comes in, the library, um.
How much are we in a deficit then each month in pre-pandemic?
So I have a note from Eileen that said, we had like twenty thousand dollars in the revolving account. Um, and that was about two years' worth of lease. So I have a note from Eileen, the fund is about depleted. We can't pay the next bill when it comes in. The bill is going to be between six hundred and forty and eight hundred dollars for two copiers.
But how much of a deficit are we running each month on that machine compared to pre-pandemic?
I I would have to run reports and get back to you and it'd be, it'd take me a long time to do it.
All right, I mean, even an estimate?
Well, twenty thousand.
I I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know how many.
Dollars a month on it.
Yeah, I don't know how many years' worth of collections we had that made up that twenty thousand dollars. So that's why, so I'd have to go through ten years' worth of income reports. And suss out what was, um, not fines, but prints and.
So how much is in, so you're saying that account's depleted? So what I, my concern is where are we going to get that money from? Um, to pay those ongoing bills for which we're going to be running a deficit?
I think that that's a different conversation and like that's not on business right now. And something that we could individually think about or talk to Beth about, but finding six thousand dollars over the next year and a half. Versus how much hours they would have to put in to attempt to drum up the business. To make up that deficit, I don't, I don't see it worth it.
I I'm simply, uh, mention, um, my idea then would maybe be, uh, I would maybe back off on a more robust. Um, advertising, but it certainly couldn't hurt to advertise or just keep as a as an item on the town website that. We have copy services, even if we don't actively do that, they can't, why would we not?
It's on our library website. Um, I don't have much jurisdiction over the town website. I think I should maybe add an F A Q and link back to it.
Okay.
Um, and I have an October newsletter that's about to go out. So as my director's note, I can say.
It doesn't need to be a one pager, but it it wouldn't hurt to just at least remind the public to, that might be a balance between. Not having this flood of people coming in, but at the same time, um, if people, if if business ramps up a little bit. And it's not overwhelming, it, I mean. It it may not hurt to mention that in the newsletter. Did, uh, are people in agreement? Are my peers in agreement?
Yeah, a couple of social media posts, the director's report.
I'm not saying go go crazy, I'm, you know.
Actually, I think.
Just like all our services, reminding the community what.
What we have. I think that's good because that shows what we provide. If you start using it, it's not really that hard. You can really, you can put like, um, thumb drives in it. It just walks you right through it.
Okay.
I mean, it's great system.
So may I wrap up the conversation because, you know, ten minutes talking about, I understand it's a big chunk of change and we have to figure it out. But, um, the point I was trying to make ten or so minutes ago, so sorry to be.
No, 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 you know, you're you're reminding me of my own words at the top of the meeting.
Yes, but the point is, um. And I don't know if this is the case, but I've I've done a lot of copier leases in my I T career. If at the end of the lease period, it's not always like you own it. I don't believe. It's just, it's it's they get a three year lease and they take care of the maintenance and all the, um, all the supplies. So all I was asking is, um, so the buyout is fine, but what would it take for us to just get rid of it? When does the lease end?
Yeah.
And that may be just, you know, another couple of months worth of, you know, three hundred dollar payments, you know, split in two, so six or seven hundred dollars split in two.
No, I think we're we're on the.
So the last bill was nine hundred and thirty seven dollars.
But are we on the hook for a year?
Um, the lease ends, I can't see.
We can't get out of this without a penalty.
What I'm saying, it's it's not six thousand dollars. Um, you know, for another year. It's probably only like a thousand bucks or twelve hundred bucks or seventeen hundred dollars, much less than six thousand.
Right.
Because at the end of the lease, you don't, you don't ever own these things. One hundred percent, you never own these things.
So what, all right, wrapping this up, what do we want to do?
So so I I would like, um, to see if if Debbie, um, we can just respond to that email or I'm happy to to chat with you about it. Just to understand, or I mean, we don't even have to ask them. I just wanted to know how much more do we have to pay on this to finish out the lease?
Okay, I'll I'll look for it. I thought Eric had that information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, then moving on to I T update.
Outlook continues to be very challenging. Adjusting to Outlook is very challenging. Um, our, uh, I T company says that he would like to introduce Teams, which I've never used, so that'll be exciting, yeah.
Awesome.
I'm hoping it allows multiple people to edit a document at the same time because that's something that we run into, like that's documents locked, that document's locked, can you unlock it? Um, so he's been onsite. I think everybody except for people who might be out on leave, um, is up to speed with Outlook.
Beth, I use Teams constantly in my job. I absolutely love it. I would be very, very happy.
Thank you.
Give a demo of Teams and show like all the great features. It's it's wonderful. Like you can, you can have meetings. You can have chat, you have files, you share files, directors, it's amazing. It it really saved us in the pandemic in my, you know, honestly, like it was huge, yeah.
All right, yeah, Doug. Oh, sorry, you're still going.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does your team, does it use a web? Does your team, does it use a web, web Outlook or like are you using a web browser?
So I use the way, I like the web one a lot better. Um, but there is an app too. And our IT guys are like, why are you in the app? Why, why aren't you in the app? But I like the web version better.
And is the Outlook managing the various town distribution lists now?
I sent something to the trustee list today. Did you all get it? It didn't bounce back for the first time, so I think that that's been straightened out.
Okay, great.
Yeah, they, they took care of the staff one first and then we added in the outside groups. So I, I do think they are finally working, except now we're running into like, oh, that file's too big. So I asked IT to address that and increase the file size because I guess you can send it as a OneDrive document if it's in your group. But like all of you do not have town of graft and email addresses, so that's not an option.
But regarding Teams, like please let me know what would be a good time.
Yeah, October 19th.
October 19th, that's the Christmas day?
No, no.
No, no one is that?
I don't know. I'll look at our next staff meeting. We have one tomorrow and I'll take it.
Okay.
We'll try and.
All right. All right. Uh, moving on, are we ready to move on to Capitol?
I do wanna say that IT, no, I have a door issue again. Um, somebody came in the front door with a key, which they were not supposed to do. Um, and I told them that if I had to call Signet, I was gonna send that bill to that department. Um, IT tried to repair the schedule because what happens if you come in that front door with a key? It screws up the scheduled unlocking at 10:00 AM and locking at 9:00 PM. So it took three days and rebooting the computer twice and it finally just resolved by itself. So I'm not clear why, but Jonathan's been working on that for me. Um, and then, um, he also tried to help me with a public records request for video camera footage. But it ended up that I had to go to Staples today to buy bigger DVD, um, to write onto, so. Spending an inordinate amount of time on IT this month.
Just, so I don't wanna know a specific name, but I'm just curious, like when you said somebody came in with a key, like.
So staff members are given keys, including town employees. They are directed to never come in the front door with a key and they forgot. And they came in the front door and it screwed everything up.
Okay.
So they can go in the Snap.
Library staff.
The library staff.
Library staff do not have keys to the front door.
Yeah.
So it wasn't library staff?
No.
It was not that.
When I was saying it was or it was.
Moving on, we also had an IT issue with staff. Key card's not working, but I'm thinking that's user error and they're just not waiting long enough. They take, try and get in there.
Cool. Now we're ready to move on to Capitol.
We're working on a procedure for laptops, but that got derailed to the flooding. So look for that hopefully by the end of October.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're gonna start ruling that out.
All right. And, um.
Well, I assigned it to Heidi, so she's gonna help us come up with policy and procedure and sign out sheet.
I can give a quick.
Sign out agreement? I don't know.
Are we ready for Capitol or are you upset?
I'll shut up.
Okay.
I don't mean to interrupt, but trying to eat my own words at the top of the meeting that it's five of eight and we're, we're less than halftime.
I was gonna see if I could leave early because I was tired, but I'm through that at this point.
Speak quickly.
Anyway, so I'm not gonna do that. At Capitol campaign, everything's going well. The, the, uh, three, a couple of things we're working on, we're, um, finalizing different, um, projects. As you saw, you saw a lot of the work that was done around the gardens. Pearl has been doing a lot for us based upon, um, different, you know, what we needed and cared for. So that's, that's almost done. There's just a couple, we have a little bit, um, we're, we're working on one section that still needs to be done.
It looks great.
Oh, thank you. They did a great job. Um, and then, um, there's like, we have a couple more projects. We're gonna be working on a lighting project, Doug and I and others. We found a solution which we talked briefly about, so we are still gonna, we're gonna do that. We're finishing up the garden work and we're also gonna, we're trying, hoping, hoping that we're gonna be able to install all the musical instruments that are for the children's department if we're able to do it before the first frost. And we know we have to wait because of the, it's gonna be in the area where there could be drainage issues.
Okay.
So, and, um, Joe Perle is gonna do that for us. He looked at the area and he came up with a good solution of where they should be. So, um, that's going well. And then we are having our donor party. Um, we thought, you know, we're very happy, but we thought that, we thought it was like a huge crisis because the community room wasn't gonna be available, but we've changed. We're gonna have it in other places in the library and we know the kitchen's gonna be available. So we're going through with that. We've, invitations been sent out, emails have been sent out to people, many, many. So we're getting good response. So that's going, that's underway quite well. Do you want me to give you an update on the small stones while I'm talking out of order?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay, it's not that important. That's it.
Dana, on the chest, in, in Doug, the chess table, so.
I can talk about that. They're gonna, we, we're working on getting, um, quotes on that. Doug's got a quote and I'm getting a quote from Pearl Company because they, they saw them sitting there and they're like, oh gosh, we could really do that. They, they're probably gonna help us with that based upon what they're gonna charge us.
Awesome.
So we're gonna move them to where they need to go.
Yeah, and we got the thumbs up today to move, to swap the desks, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, we'll be doing that.
Does everybody know what that, so it's the upstairs desk is gonna move to the downstairs, to the front, to the main entrance?
The small lobby desk, which is a little bit curved, is gonna move up to the big lobby desk that's upstairs and that one's gonna move downstairs. And that was, I think, the original intent. It's just the timing with the installation.
Okay, and the staff, and the staff is asking for that, right?
Yes, confirmed. Yeah.
And we're hoping it'll make that area look a little bit cleaner with less wires and stuff.
Yeah, because they have that little table on the side, so.
And then I just wanted to ask, have, or do we have the approval for the musical instruments or not yet?
I think that has to come from William and I don't know if he's waiting for someone to come and sneak the drain first.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I, I will start chasing other companies so we can get the process moving.
Yeah, I think that would be best if that's done before we do them, but.
I mean, the only other option would be to have them all in the back by the children's amphitheater, but.
Well, that's not, we've looked at it. The flat area is much better. There'll be a lot of problems. So. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Friends update, Carrie.
I will be brief. Um, we had the, um, the Friends, Friends had, um, the used back to school book sale. Um, and, um, it was a lot of work. Um, there were challenges with, due to, um, having to wait for the room for, because of the flooding. But it was wonderful. Um, Ray, so, um, the back, so the back to school sale, um, really kind of focused on teachers. So teachers actually, um, who came to the sale, um, were able to purchase, um, materials at half the regular cost, which is already very low. Um, so we did raise money, the Friends raised money of $2,600. But even above and beyond that, we moved hundreds of books into the hands of the community and it was really well attended and people had fun. So it was wonderful. So thank you. We had help from the Boyce Health, we had help from the National Honor Society students. And of course, um, the, you know, the Friends Board and supporters, you know, worked really, really hard. So very, very appreciative of all the efforts. Um, okay, so, um, so the Friends are working on a vending machine solution, um, looking at different options for having a vending machine that would be available to anybody, you know, coming to the library. Um, so they're looking at options in that space that's now available now that the counters have been adjusted. And gearing up for Graft and Celebrates the holidays, doing the book bundles that, which are always very popular with the public and are a good fundraiser for the Friends. And lastly, um, and this was such a creative solution, um, so you're like, you know, the library, you know, like, you, 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 you think about problems and, you know, and then somebody comes up with a great idea. So, um, so with the remediation that's being done for the flooding, the children's room, you cannot be used for, you know, some period of time. And thoughts were like, oh, maybe they could be in the store reading room, maybe in the large print room. Well, they said, well, well, how about the Friends corner? And it's like, what a great idea. Like never would have thought of that. So the Friends corner for folks who come to the library, um, is right, um, to the right when you come into the main entranceway. So, um, so right away people can come and, you know, access, you know, the children's room staff. Um, you know, so it's a really nice new temporary solution. So in, I know, um, Mary Ann Brer in particular, who's one of the members of the Friends Board, helped with moving Friends materials, um, to, out of, out of, out of that area to allow the children's room mover. Because that was a huge effort and, um, as, as Debbie showed on social media with her, you know, great post. So, and, um, and, and also too, you, um, I thought it was really nice that Stacy, um, our children's librarian, um, brought in the little aquarium for that area. That was, that was charming. So.
Awesome.
Anyways, okay, but thank you. So, yeah.
Awesome. Um, thank you. Um, all right. Uh, item F, um, I'm going to ask that we pass over because of, I, I think you may have already read, um, the, um, well, there was some back and forth. So neither our town administrator or assistant will be here. Um, and there was some comment, I don't have the exact document in front of me, but that as far as the board really reminding us that the trustees really don't have jurisdiction over, I guess, changing working, working conditions and, and toying around with or upsetting the apple cart of existing personnel policies with respect to pay. So.
That's, that's done below. Roger, right? That's, that's 5G, okay?
Oh, was that 5G?
That's not, I don't know.
I don't know the relevancy of that.
That's 5G, that's not, um, yeah.
Oh, it says flood remediation and appreciation of GPL staff members.
Different.
Oh, it's a different article. I'm sorry. Oh, all right. I apologize. I, I was ahead of myself on this. So what, what is this referred to then? If it's not 5G, it seemed to be one of the same.
Yeah, I, I.
Oh.
And yeah, we, we received that, um, earlier. It, it kind of got jumbled in, so I think we could probably move on to the flagpole update.
The only quick question I have is what I, who is, who is supporting Beth so that we can get some company to come in here and, and clean out the drains? Is that up to her to find the company? Is that, is that what's been decided? Okay. I just wanted a clarification on that.
Okay.
Because that's extremely important. Okay.
Quickly, Roger, um.
Yes.
William was gonna speak to the flood remediation and I did the walkthrough with him and.
Oh, okay.
And that, um, they finished removing a foot of the wall, um, the insulation in the community room, the technology closet. Um, they left today saying that they were finished and Sarah Bannister and I went through and they, there were a couple of areas that they said they were going to, they were in the plan that they did not address. So I text William around five o'clock with pictures and he's going to reach out. Serve Pro is going to come in. Um, their manager is supposed to come in tomorrow anyway to double check. Um, but now he's gonna address those other issues that were not done. Uh, Preserve 24 is the company that comes in to replace the drywall and the insulation and any flooring that needs to be replaced. And they said they'll start as soon as Serve Pro is finished. They're kind of on call, ready and waiting for it.
Awesome.
Thank you so much for keeping on top of that. That's so critically important to identify those issues and report them, you know, back as soon as possible.
Awesome. All right. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to everything being fixed. Um, Doug Bowman, flagpole update.
Flagpole, yeah. As a reminder, we had, um, a graft in resident come, was that, I think that was last month. Um, and.
No, it was a month before.
Two months ago and requested, right, um, that the trustees, um, assess and consider putting in a flagpole at the library. So I've collected, I mean, they provided a lot of information, so we have all the information on purchasing it. Um, we've spoken to John Stevens because it's, um, Historic District Commission. It would be something that would have to go in front of that committee, um, once we had a plan on where it's located. Um, we've considered a couple of different locations, one in the front, which I think we decided not because of the historic nature of that common view, I'm sorry, the common view, um, from the common. And then another one would be on the side, so the Upton Street side. Um, I think the challenge with that one is that there is a, there's that nice island, which is what the Pearl's just, we just had re, um, replanted. Um, but there's the power lines that go through that little section too. Um, so I'm not sure that's the best idea. Um, I think what I would like is, um, approval from this committee that we should even go to that next step because it's gonna be a lot of work putting together the plan, submitting it to the, um, HTC. And I just wanna make sure that this group is in favor of the.
So, so I would, so point of order, so I, so my question is with the flag. Who, like, it's a big responsibility when you have a flagpole to make sure that it's raised and lowered appropriately. I don't think that that is really a, a, a no, a regular responsibility of library staff. I just, I just, I don't know who does it, who does it for, um, the, the rest of the buildings in the town? If there were somebody, like if the, you know, if the town, um, you know, whoever is responsible for the other flagpoles was willing to take care of that and not put another burden on the library staff on a, you know, really just, it just, it just isn't like a, a job responsibility, I think that makes sense, in my opinion, for library staff to be expected to do. So if it was something that the town, and also too, the grounds really are not the purview of, of, of the library. You know, it's supposed, the grounds are really supposed to be maintained by the town. They're outside of the library. So I don't know that it's really something that we should take on without having a commitment from the town to take care of it. Because we, you have to treat it with respect.
So along those lines, I, I think, and I, we really haven't, this, this question came up regarding use of the parking lot, but it's related to your point is, all right, the library trustees, according to our charter and according to the, uh, I'm pretty sure the master general is, they speak of having jurisdiction over the, the building and facility and, and, and such, okay? But it seems like some of the programs and other things spill out over to the exterior of the building. And, and so right now, to the extent that I'm not entirely clear as to whether we have jurisdiction over the entire perimeter of that land, including the parking lot and all the grounds. The town does have a display of flags on municipal property. Um, it's a policy. It's a select board policy that speaks of flag poles, okay? And, and it doesn't speak of a flag being displayed in any other manner. And the question being then is if we as a board want to display the American flag on the building, would it, would it be, have to be something as grand as a flagpole? Or could it be something like you see, like a bracket on a pole? And then it gets rolled up every night or however, uh, the flag code reflects you should roll up a flag. I don't know if we do agree on a flag, it doesn't necessarily have to be so grand. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Oh, I, well, I, I do have.
Yeah, please.
Go for it.
But I, but what I was going to say before getting into that is we don't seem to have enough information on this right now. So if we can table this, maybe do some research and bring it back to the next meeting, um, before opening it up for further discussion at this time.
And what type of information are you looking for?
So, so my que, so I think there was a question on the table for Doug when you were asking about whose responsibility is to raise the flag. And I know you've been doing a lot of the legwork. Is that something you encountered?
I haven't checked with the other town, but basically in conversation with us, it's, it's usually a custodian.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I, so I do have one point of correction. I provided all that pricing.
Oh, you did? Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I went and did the research because the patron was interested and passed it on. I also polled, um, a bunch of local library directors and I compiled those responses and I thought I shared them out.
You did.
Okay. So, and, and it is a mix. Sometimes it's the director who gets tasked with it. Sometimes it's just any available staff member. More often than not, it's custodial. Or the library is so close to the municipal seat of government, there's a flagpole on their property and it's deemed close enough. So we have an interior flag in our historic reading room, which I think has been like enough for the last almost whatever, years. But we have a patron who's interested in having a flag outside on the property. So we, she went to Evan and Evan said grounds is purview of trustees, but I don't know that if Evan is aware that the common actually goes to our curved walkway out front. That's technically still graft in common.
Right.
Trustees do own the parking lot because I believe when we went to the building grant, we got that parcel as part of jurisdiction to build the parking lot.
Yeah, definitely.
So I don't.
So what did, what, now you had, had recommended that we table this. What needs to be done? What would you need to do before, prior to us revisiting this? Aaron, did you have?
So I mean, I'd, I'd love just to get the, the sense of this committee or this group, if you guys are in favor of a flag in general, to go into the extra work.
So, so I, I think in order to move on, right, it's Doug's original question was, um, do we wanna pursue this? And I, I, I think I'd like to propose a motion, um, for Doug to continue to pursue this or we decide.
But what would he pursue?
Yeah, what's he pursuing? Because we don't have the facts, correct?
Do, do we wanna, do we wanna flag at all? Because we can do this or, or not.
So I am not objecting to any type of flags and, and to the extent that American flag is displayed, I'm not, um, I think in a manner of efficiency and everything like that, and I hate, and, and I think a lot of people would agree with me. Lately, the political climate has been that flags have been a very polarizing issue. And I don't want this to be a polarizing issue. I think there's a lot of political banter that weaponizes symbols and flags. It, but that having been said, I think if we are to display a flag in some prominent way, that both from a maintenance standpoint and from a price standpoint, it doesn't necessarily have to be a flagpole. Usual and customarily, we see flagpoles, but I mean, it could be something as simple as a bracket on that front pole.
What about a flag like that and then by the front door?
It would have to be indoors.
You mean indoors?
So can we just move the existing flag from the historic reading room to the lobby?
I mean, it, that way you don't have one at both.
I, I, I think, I, I think this came about with the public, uh, the, the couple coming in, in, in front of us, looking and specifically asking for something, they didn't use the term, but I'll use the word prominent. To me, that means flagpole's height, prominence and, 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 and such. Um, for me, it. For me, I think a happy medium regarding cost and maintenance and staffing issues, a flag can still be prominently displayed without being on a flagpole. It can be, it can be on a small bracket, and that makes maintenance very easy.
Where's the bracket attached to?
The, one of the front posts.
Because we were told by the town that we're not allowed to touch the envelope, so I don't know if that's, that is it or not.
Well, actually, with the trustees, we determine who.
Yeah, I mean, that was more, that was more in regards to the Capitol.
Well, that was about affecting any warranty.
I mean, I personally would not be in favor of a flagpole on one of those front poles, like one of these ones that sits on an angle.
So what do we want, so what, what do you, I mean, I mean, I like the idea, but I, you know, and, you know, I'm certainly a free speech guy and such, but I'll tell you that, that it's frustrating to me that, that people might be viewing this initiative and some, you know, sort of weaponizing the flag. I love the American flag and I will personally say that all the other colored flags are, exist, although it's taken a long time, but because of the freedoms that we have and the way we progress as a country. That said, I'm at a toss-up, I don't feel that, in other words, I think our freedom to read policy is just as important, if not a thousand times important, than a red, white and blue symbol, okay? And so, what is your comment, Aaron? I'm fifty-fifty on it.
So, so the, what was presented to the board two months ago was, all the other municipal buildings have flags on their property, I don't know if that's true or not, because I haven't inventoried them, but I think.
It is, it is true, it is true.
Right, so they, so they were asking, why doesn't the library have a flag on the property, right, and that's what was brought to the board.
Could we take a straw poll about whether people agree to, would?
May I ask a quick question? Is a school considered a municipal building?
But schools have them.
They do have them, okay.
Does anyone, does anyone here object to a flagpole, an American, with an American flag? Does anyone object to it?
No, but. My, my, my concern, my concern is that we are short-staffed.
Point of order, there's a lot of discussion and the chair has not called on anybody.
I know, you're right, yeah, and I think over the meetings I've been sort of loosely allowing some banter back and forth, and thank you for calling that point of order. Because it's caused our meetings to be excessive and the discussions to go more than five minutes apiece, because we're not going to get done based on the length of discussion that we're putting into this. So, I mean, to the extent that all the other buildings have it, yeah, I'd agree to it, but again, we have to come up with some mechanics of how this would be lit, how this would be taken care of and such. So do you feel that there are some questions, I think there's questions that remain unanswered.
I don't think the logistics of like the installation of the pole, the purchasing the pole, I think that's the easy part, it's really more just, do we want to do it? Where would it go and would the HTC approve it? And then, of course, having somebody manage the up and down.
Right.
I believe there's, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's the ability to leave the flag out, it doesn't have to be put up and taken down every single day, but there's various rules on when it needs to be taken down.
So do you want to, do you want to research more of the mechanics of how other places have done it, the timeframe and how they came about the decision to, where to put it? I, I don't know what, if we're going to land on something tonight with the limited time we have.
Well, if no one's willing to commit to saying yea or nay, I will get some additional information and provide to this group next month.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to say yes to it, but the mechanics of how big, where it is and all of that stuff is an entirely different discussion, I mean.
And most of that's going to involve the HTC, and that's, that's where some of the work is, that if this group's not in favor of it, then it's not worth investing the time in that.
Right, and so I'm going to agree with the flag, yeah.
So may I make a proposal to table this to, I want to say six months to a year, right, because of, I think it's a good idea. So I'll make a motion to table this for six months, I want to say, because I.
I'll second that motion.
Great, alright, table for six months, to what date, do we have a date?
The only, so discussion, right, so the only reason why I said table it for six months is because we're talking about, you know, right now expenses, you know, we're trying to figure out how to pay for copier, pay for some other things too. I think, once we can build our coffers up again, after, you know, we do the Kupla project, we can treat this as a one-off project as well, once we can allocate the proper funds for it, so.
So six months is.
Just to revisit it in six months, and if there's, we're not ready for it again, then we can decide to either remove it from the, from the.
People, people meeting.
So revisit in our April meeting?
Well, that would be more, okay.
Alright, any discussion on the motion?
I would just add, I'll continue to gather some information in the meantime.
Alright, any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed? To clear the motion carried. Yeah. And as we move forward, I think it's nice to advertise all the other stuff that represents those colors, including the freedom to read and all the book banning crap. So, it's more, more than symbols, it's what we actually do. A general update, alright, so walkabout, alright, high level. Appreciate everyone's prior walkabouts to detail which they've done, including pictures and explanation. I did a walkabout, I gave everyone a three-page summary. I don't think that, as a casual observer, I probably caught everything, okay? And that in my three-page summary, I ended with questioning whether or not it made sense for this to be a solo activity. I think it captures just a snapshot in time. And from a day-to-day standpoint, between all, you and all the staff, I'm thinking, the day-to-day folks are going to catch all this stuff, aren't they?
No, they don't have time.
We're oblivious.
No.
Well, you work there every day, how can you be oblivious?
It's a huge building.
Because you're going to do your next thing and you're not walking in with a fresh pair of eyes going, it's different, what's weird, when we did our walkabout with Preserve 24 and I was in the community room, I happened to look up and noticed a stain in a cracked ceiling tile. I've been in that room multiple times.
What do people, what's everyone's thoughts on that, I mean, is it something that people, we should continue doing?
So, I absolutely think that somebody from the board, and that can be rotating, should make the effort once a month to go and get be a fresh set of eyes to someplace that we are not every day. I don't think it would be appropriate to task the librarians to be updating us with this, and also, it's just showing some more investment from this board with those eyes and to bring it back. So I think that we need to leave it, that's my opinion, with the board.
Solo versus with anyone else?
Well, it could be with one other person on the board, it should, you know, that time.
So, so.
Sorry, both.
It goes without saying though, that on a daily basis, you being the director.
She had the floor.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, sorry, I was tripping over something.
I was going to say out of order too.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
When I started on this board four years ago, it used to be two people every month did that. I think between COVID and people's schedules, it became a solo mission. It can't be more than two because then we run the risk of quorum. But that can also be done, if there's more than one, that can be done at different times, it just, it needs to live here. So as far as that, I would love to hear the rest of your update, I know I read it, but I don't, I don't think that the discussion to put it to the librarians should be on the table.
So I just want to make sure that on a daily basis, that, I, I, I hope it goes without saying, that if someone notices a tear in the rug or something that is some damage or anything like that, that they bring that to your attention, right? So, there's probably stuff that gets noticed and fixed before we even see it.
Right.
Yeah, and Beth brings it to our attention also, of course.
I was just going to say, yeah, I just, the librarians are really busy, but I mean, sometimes we find things together, you know? So I think this, I think we should continue it with a duo.
Absolutely.
I just figured I'd throw it out there.
Present a shorter, maybe it's like what you did, you sent us all photographs and you said what was, what was going on, maybe you could just, the person who does it should give us a highlight. But then, I guess my question is, what's the action, I mean, do we then create action items based upon what's found?
Well, I know that other, other libraries I've seen across the country have checklists. In other words, I'm seeing that, I don't know if we have any uniformity, so I'd like to see at some point, I was looking at to, like maybe a checklist specific to this building. Yeah, in other words, I randomly may miss something, I flushed every toilet, I made sure the soap dispensers worked. No, 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 I don't have, no, but I don't have any, I don't have any, I don't have any comments, in other words, I, I put, I put the three pager in front and that's it. In other words, we don't need to discuss all the detail.
It's eight twenty-three, can we move to the next item, please? Thank you for doing the walkabout.
So I'd like to ask to look into a checklist, that's all.
That's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, doors, windows, stuff like that.
See, they didn't pick on you in you in a half hour.
There were pictures.
With seventy pictures.
We picked on him.
We did, you missed it.
I'm not picking on you, alright, so, so we did the gutter repair, we welcomed Shannon Phelan, trustee meeting dates, I don't think there was any concern, are we all okay with October, November and December? Alright, so, alright, so on Wednesday, I don't think we should be meeting on a Jewish holiday, I know that on Accessibility Advisory, we tabled one.
I don't think we should do it.
Because of a member and we moved that, I don't think it's respectful to meet and say, well, Beth can't attend, then we'll meet without her. So, would we want to make that the sixteenth or the thirtieth?
The sixteenth is a meeting Monday.
Yeah, 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 twenty, so thirtieth?
I'm sorry, could you clarify what month you're talking about?
October of twenty-four, so it's October twenty-third of twenty-four.
It's a Jewish holiday.
Okay, thank you.
So would we?
I'm in favor of moving that.
Yes, I, yes, and so, back to the thirtieth?
Let me look, Jewish holidays is twenty-two. The High Holidays are literally a month long, we just finished, we're halfway through at the moment, so. The thirtieth would be fine.
Alright, everyone okay with the thirtieth?
The sixtieth would not, so.
Okay. Alright, so moving on then to.
Do we need to make a motion to accept it?
Oh, of course.
I make a motion to accept the library trustee calendars with the change from October twenty-third to October thirtieth, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Second.
Carrie got that before you.
That's fine.
Alright, any discussion on the motion, hearing that all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to clear the motion, Carrie? Alright, so twenty-twenty-three holiday, I know that there was some question, I, let's, let's, we're going to have to really plow through this quickly. The town is closed on, I know that the town is closed, the municipal side is closed on Friday, the, what date is it, the tenth?
Friday the tenth, they're closed.
And you, Beth, were saying, alright, the library is usually open on Saturday, but if we close on.
What month are we talking about?
November.
This is November for Veterans Day.
Of this year.
Yeah, and so.
Oh, you're talking about this year, okay.
Yeah, so your proposal was to have us close on Saturday instead, but stay open. But from a, from an employment standpoint, if the town, if the town has declared that the Friday employees are not to report to work because Friday is the holiday, how can we sort of just say, well, we'll just call the building closed on Saturday? Wait a minute, on Friday, in other words, we'll open on Friday but close on Saturday, you want it to swap them out.
Right, so Board of Trustees has jurisdiction over setting the closings calendar, what you can't do is give the staff extra paid holidays, so you couldn't decide, they can have both Friday and Saturday off paid. The holiday is officially on Saturday, the eleventh, so my suggestion for the calendar was closed on Saturday. But it's different from what the town is doing, so does it make more sense?
So, so the fact that the town does anything, we don't run arrive any labor laws or any of that?
I don't believe so, like the challenging thing is if a holiday has already put in, been put in for that date in a shore force, our payroll system, then.
Yeah, please.
So from my understanding, the, most of the town buildings are not open on Saturday, but Veterans Day is a federally recognized holiday and they have to give them that time. And therefore, it's being observed on Friday.
Right.
However, the library is one of the few town municipalities that's open on Saturday. So my personal feeling is that it would be appropriate to observe it on the actual holiday for the library staff. And, and this, this board would have to decide either that we are going to forfeit the closure on Friday and be open on Friday, or we are going to close both Friday and Saturday, recognizing that we are leaving staff a day less in their paychecks that way.
Alright, so.
No, everyone would get scheduled for the Friday holiday and have Saturday off unpaid, which is what we do for like long weekends.
And everyone's okay with that?
I guess the question.
That's the question on the floor.
Alright, so Debbie's, I think Debbie may have some.
It's my face again, the part-time people then don't necessarily, they don't get holiday pay. So if we're talking about closing on a holiday and giving people holiday pay, that's not everyone on staff.
What's the issue here, I guess, why are we even considering this, that's what I don't understand.
Beth had brought up that, that she thought it would be nice, because I'm thinking that it impacts most people in a positive way, that by closing on Saturday versus a town which is closing on Friday and swapping that out, it gives those people a full weekend, but you're saying, Debbie, that not everyone's going to be positively impacted, because the part-timers would have to take that unpaid. But Beth, you're saying that that's not unusual sometimes.
No, no, and if a part-timer who's under twenty hours and not getting holiday, and not a camp, so anybody between, we have people working like eight to nineteen hours, they don't necessarily lose their work hours and not get enough hours that week, they're given the opportunity to pick up a shift to total out their hours in that pay period.
Alright.
So they're only at a loss if they choose to take a loss.
And they could, they could lose those hours.
They may not have the availability to make up the hours as well.
But that could happen if the library were closed on Friday regardless, right?
Yeah.
Right, if the part-time was working on Friday, they'd have the same issue.
They'd have the same, be in the same situation.
Point of order, so is there a specific, you again, don't have to say any, but is there a specific concern that you are aware of?
Is this going to, is this, is this going to cause a problem?
I thought it was a problem and I'm trying to correct it.
Okay, and you're saying that it still remains a problem? Or if we were to swap it on?
The discussion with Beth and I, when this, this was made and brought before the board last September, I asked her, I said, what do we do, because I've not done this before? Because the same thing, it doesn't make sense to be closed the day before the holiday when we're actually, and she said, then we'll close on the holiday. And then what had happened is she refigured that, she changed the date on the form, sent up the list, the list came before the board, that it would be approved for the same holiday as the town. That was not brought to my attention, I made out the schedule as I was directed to do, giving people the Saturday off, and now it's an issue with the staff that they're given the Saturday off as a holiday, and that's, but that's not what the board approved, because that was changed.
So it sounds to me like what you had recommended is that we move forward, it sounds like I was seeing peripherally that the heads were nodding, that, that to move, that it sounded like a good, they thought it was a good idea to move forward with Saturday off.
That's what's on the current staff schedule, but that's not what was approved.
Then what I'll do is.
That's the amendment that I sent.
Okay, I get it, I get it.
And, and, but not necessarily Friday off too. In other words, giving them two days off, in other words, I'm not.
Yeah, I don't want to say it's not, it's not an important holiday, but traditionally, they've only gotten the one day.
Alright, so I'll, I'll accept them.
Point of order, I just, if we approve giving the Saturday off, do we think that that is a solution that the staff will be happy with?
Point of order, you can't use point of order to claim the floor.
I know, yeah.
You need to correct something.
You know what, you, I, I was going to wait for a pause, because point of order is a parliamentary question, so you've been using point of order to, like, to gain the floor, maybe Mr. Chair or, or maybe more prominently. Like, I have a difficult time like seeing the people to my side versus you folks, so maybe a more prominent, trying to get my attention to get the floor, that's actually not a. So maybe a more prominent trying to get my attention to get the floor, that's actually not a point of order. A point of order is when parliamentary, from a parliamentary standpoint, a committee member is, is making a parliamentary inquiry or something like that, and it has nothing to do with actually trying to get the floor to speak to the motion. And so, I will recognize you, but it's, I'm just saying that from a.
How do you prefer that I request?
Oh, no, just Mr. Chair, or, or maybe just let me know that you want to speak, but I guess, from a procedural standpoint, a point of order is something that's uniquely different in Robert's rules, which is our parliamentary guide. So, it's just like a Mr. Chair or something, if no one's speaking, and I don't see you raising your hand, just say, Mr. Chair, and I'll, I'll simply rec- yeah, no, I'll recognize you to speak, but yeah, you, you beat me to the punch on that, thank you so much. But you had a question.
So, Mr. Chair, I just would like to clarify with the, with Debbie as a representative of the staff, before we vote, I just want, I just want a sense of, I think what we all want to do is we want to have a schedule that makes sense and that is not going to cause any issues and that the staff is going to be happy with, so that's what I would just like clarification of.
And would that be, and would, and would that be achieved by opening on Friday and closing on Saturday?
That's what's currently on the schedule, because of the document that I thought went to the board.
Then I'll accept the motion then from someone consistent with that.
I make a motion to.
And that's what's on this.
Okay.
Right.
Right?
That's amended.
That's amended.
Alright, so I, I'll accept the motion, Carrie.
I, I make a motion to amend the calendar to close the library on Saturday, November eleventh, in recognition of Veterans Day, and amend the calendar accordingly, and remain open on Friday, November tenth instead.
Second.
Alright, motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing that all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To clear the motion, Carrie. Alright, so twenty-twenty-four closing schedule.
Did we already do that? We didn't add order, I thought.
No, we just did the twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, so, no, so we did twenty-twenty-four trustees' meeting dates. And then we went with twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I get you.
So, I, I, whoever put this together didn't magically do it in one second, I, I, I assume that this was given much thought. Is there anyone who has any issues with this meeting schedule?
I thought we already went over it.
The meeting schedule we're looking at, it's the.
So did we vote this already?
I thought we did, didn't we?
For what?
No, the twenty-four, twenty-four, no, the closing dates I meant, not meeting schedule, no, there was five D. Five, you know, those five D is separate from five B, we, we did the trustee meeting dates for twenty-four. We're doing twenty-twenty-four closing schedule.
But we, are we gonna discuss them before we vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, I'll accept the motion though first.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-four holiday closing schedule.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, and do I have any discussion?
No.
Yeah. I saw something here that said they wouldn't get a day off, and I didn't understand. My look, maybe I'm.
So we noted for your convenience, which are.
Oh, I know what it is.
Only because as I said, we can't give ex- you can't give us extra holidays.
Okay, oh, we can't?
No, you can't, you can only give a number of holidays, but either in the union contract or.
The Wednesday, July third, I was surprised that it's just, the town's not gonna be, are they gonna be open that day? They're not gonna be open?
They're open until four-thirty that day, so normally, we'd be open till nine, so what we do is close early, because historically, there's a concert on the common and you can't park and go to the library, because there's a huge event that the town turns out.
That's fine, I just thought, I thought it would be a good day for them to have off, that's all, okay, I get it now, thank you.
Any further discussion?
You have, the professional development days, you have closed, like, three of those, is that what you usually do, or is it just delayed?
It's not, I had a request from staff, and I'm proposing that we take two full days to close and do staff development, and two half-days. This is your opportunity for discussion, if you don't feel that that's appropriate or.
So.
Currently, it's three half-days.
Yeah.
So, they'll be developing it from ten o'clock till nine o'clock, it'll be eleven hours of.
No, but if we have all the staff coming for a four, a six or seven hour development day, there's no staff that can then staff in the evening, and if we have it on Friday, because Friday tends to be our rotate-off for Saturday day, it's really hard to get everybody there, and we experimented this year with moving the days to Thursday, and it created a problem with having night staffing, so we closed for the full day, that would be very.
Alright, any further discussion then? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To clear the motion, Carrie. Alright, so I'm gonna try to keep this at a very high level, I don't know if that's possible, but F and G, alright, so library directors.
E and F.
E and F.
E and F, alright, assess contract negotiations, that's not within our purview, it's ongoing. I think we've misstepped by talking about it, or, or, I'm, I'm not going to list it any detail on this, other than that we're not involved in negotiations and they're ongoing, so.
Mr. Chair may ask a question?
Yes.
So will we be advised once the contract negotiations complete?
Yeah, in other words, we will be advised, just like the general public will be, and the ratified contract will be public documented, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, alright, so, F, library directors' performance review, and by town administrator, so, alright, there was a, a couple of issues here. I sent an email out to everyone, and then no serial discussion occurred. But the discussion when Evan replied to me, and then we had a discussion back and forth about jurisdiction, about who appoints you, who you report to, and everything like that, to me is still unanswered, but here's the issue. Alright, and here's the nuance of it, open meeting law appears to apply also to the fact that I had a discussion with the town administrator that went back and forth. It was CC'd to everyone. It was, it was, it was a reply to all, it went back and forth all today. And everyone sort of was an, was an observer to that discussion, even though they may, did not participate in that discussion. And for that reason, when in doubt, check it out, okay? And so, in situations like this, I'm, I'm having a hunch that this, my, this back and forth, none of you, you folks are all on, all the observing, but I engage, and then he, well, I didn't engage, I sent an email out, and then there was this back and forth, that was a reply to all. For that reason, I think this may have run afoul of the open meeting law. And as a committee, we have a duty, and through, through me as chair, to self-report, okay? So I plan on sending that email chain to the Attorney General's office for comment, okay? Aside from the, any comment that we make on this item, from a procedural standpoint, from an open meeting standpoint, I think we may, I, this, my discussion back and forth, and everyone being CC'd, may run afoul of the open meeting law, so I'm going to verify whether or not that was the case. And so, does anyone have any comment on, on that perspective?
Mr. Chair, I replied to the message, so if I would, yes, I did.
Alright, well, any, any email chain, it's, it's not, it's not sort of, it's not really indictment that we were criminals, it's that basically we have to fol- follow the open meeting law. I think there's probably plenty of committees that have probably run afoul over the years of this law, have never reported it, may not even know, known they've run afoul. I'm saying that I think we have, yes.
Um, so I just, yeah, I just wanted to help you clarify, so I actually called the chair prior to this meeting and questioned that, the reason, I know that this has been a practice of this board the whole time that I've been on, that there might not be engagement across all of us in these email chains, however, they're privy, like, we are all privy to that information. I went to a training at my workplace, which is a public institution, not the library, but a school in the state, and I, yesterday, and we got a training on open meeting law from the state, one of the state universities lawyers, and what she said during that training was that a lot of boards will actually go afoul on email chains, not realizing that they are part of the public record, and so, even if you're sending information out that's not prior to a meeting, like the meeting packet, even if not everybody engages, if you have a quorum of people that could see the information, you're breaking public meeting, the open meeting law, so I didn't know if that followed, if we kind of fell in that, and so I called the chair prior to see if that's something that we should check out to make sure that now, moving forward, we're staying in those bounds.
Yeah, and, and I think it was a, I, I'm glad that you, you called me on, to, to discuss this issue, because I think the open meeting law over the years has become very much more detailed, more nuanced, and covers a lot more situations. And for this reason, if we think we have run afoul of the open meeting law, within thirty days of that alleged violation, we need to self-report. The last thing that, that, from a position of public trust and the Attorney General's office, they hate when, when things are brought to their attention, that, that people could, that a committee could have self-reported. Doesn't mean we're criminals, it doesn't mean we have a malice, it's that we have to really set the example that we're abiding by the very laws that all committees are, are held to, so. But as far as, I, I still think though that, from maybe a one-on-one standpoint regarding that email chain, I think there's a question of jurisdiction that still needs to be clarified. And, and I had requested that it be clarified by Labor Council through town administrator in writing. I had outlined some very specific points regarding our charter and our bylaws that I think support my position that you report, yeah.
Can you please state for, you know, because, because people don't know what we're even talking about.
So what, what we're talking, okay, so, alright, so, library directors' performance review, what I was talking about initially was my, the, the sense of the email chain is that historically, okay, you have had evaluations.
Sporadically.
Sporadically, but by the, by the town administrator. And, and I had outlined, I had outlined that before, alright, so, you have yet to have an eval.
From, yeah, from the current time.
Alright, and there's some questions, town administrator through Labor Council has opined that he doesn't believe, contrary to what I've said, that, that he's responsible for your evaluation. And I have opined and laid out specifically that, that, and pointed to things within the charter and bylaws, that I believe that the town administrator does do an eval, and that we would do our part and be working together, that we would eventually, at some point, do an evaluation, feed it to the town administrator so he could do his evaluation of hers at department. He disagrees with that assessment, okay? And so, I think there's a question of jurisdiction, and so this is domino effect that, that I outlined in the email, that at a high level is I gave you documents, there's recommendations from state agencies that say, we really need clear guidelines, versus, to know that you would be, how well you would be following our expectations of you, to then weigh against an evaluation document. And then, from that point, feed our o- opinion of that evaluation based on clear-cut expectations to the town administrator. And he's come back with, no, you're in charge of the, the library director, and so that's where we stand right now.
So, Mr. Chair, so what I just wanted to clarify, I was a trustee at the time that Beth was hired. I was the, one of the trustee representatives on the search committee.
Okay.
I interviewed Beth.
Right.
And we were told by the administrator, Tim McInerney, at that time, that the board did not have jurisdiction to make the hiring decision. We were part of a board that include, that was led by the assistant town administrator at the time, had other, had staff representation on that board, but we were not to make the decision, we were only to make the recommendation. Mr. McInerney did extend the offer to Beth, which she accepted, she started. Since that time, he, when we had our prior administrator, there's only one prior, one, this, we've only had two administrators since, town administrators since Beth has joined. That town administrator did the performance reviews, so I understand that Mr.
The board did one, one, so one year I had one with Tim and another with the board, that was a separate set of.
When Tim was still a town administrator?
So, so, alright, so, so I, I think that, so what I would, what I would like to do is, alright, I'll.
I didn't finish my.
Alright, I'm sorry, go.
So, I understand that our current town administrator has a different opinion, and, and, and he is, and that town counselor, and he is saying that the town council supports his position, which is great.
He said that Labor, he said the Labor Council, not Town Council, separate attorney.
Thank you for correcting me. Okay, so Labor Council, great. The issue that I have is not that we, that we change, because he is a different town administrator, if he wants to do things differently, he has a different opinion, I'm totally fine with that. The issue that I have is that I believe that he's been town administrator for two and a half years, and this is just being raised now. If that were something that was raised when he started, then that's one thing, but to wait two and a half years and to tell us now and say that it's our responsibility and not give Beth a review, I don't find that acceptable.
Okay, and, and I mean, it, it's possible, I can only speculate that if he has always, if it's been off his radar because he thought that he never had that jurisdiction, then that could be another issue, but it's my understanding, you've gone to him regarding working conditions, and, and that you've had that relationship of boss versus subordinate.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't see where we're.
I, I was just gonna add, I was on, I was on, I've been on the library trustee board for years, and what Carrie's saying is ac- is accurate, and Tim McInerney made it really quite clear to us that we were not in charge.
And I was simply saying that, and I outlined in those emails that I believe that the combination of reading in their entirety, the pertinent sections of our bylaw, general bylaw and our town charter reflect that department heads, that the town administrator appoints department heads. Nowhere is the library director mentioned in our charter and our bylaws, but it's by reference by cross, it's a cross-reference to department heads, yes.
I guess we can, we'll figure this out, like Carrie, you know, I'm not against that, but then what I'm thinking, I'm really kinda, I don't understand the pieces then. But we, we would do the, it's okay for us to do the evaluation, but are we then able to reward her? Or is it just?
No, no.
I don't understand.
And here, here, here's the thing, is that, and to Doug's point, or maybe Doug's question, the question is, does, does, are we in charge of the library director or is the town administrator? And I'm saying that the bylaws in the charter point to the town administrator being in charge of the library director as a department head, even though the library director is not mentioned in either document. So I'd like to tape, I'd like to get the jurisdiction answer before and, and table this.
I'm happy to talk to Evan about the jurisdiction on this, because he did mention the master general laws, labor laws, which Title seven, Chapter seventy-six, Section thirty-four specifically cites that a board of trustees of a free public library in any city or town, blah, 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 answers, the director answers to the board. And in that conversation that multiple board members replied to, he did highlight that employment law is going to, is going to supersede whatever our.
What, what chapter and verse, seventy-six thirty-four or seventy-eight thirty-four?
General law, Part One, Title seven, Chapter seventy-eight, Section thirty-four.
No, seventy, no, seventy-eight thirty-four actually reads.
Employment contracts for library employees.
Okay, so here, here's the thing, is that we can, alright, and so I actually had pointed out seventy-eight thirty-four to him, and it's, it's for non-union, well, for, it's for all employees, alright? And however, alright, so the term contract, the fact that we come up with a contract, okay? That the charter also says that the town administrator shall ratify employment contracts. That's different from saying that the town, that the, well, this, we can come up with a contract and then feed it to him to ratify, but that doesn't mean that she reports to us.
I agree with what you're saying, he's, he just was kind of citing MGL as a reason that. that he's not in charge. So that's why I agree with your tabling and just was offering that.
Okay.
If you want to continue that conversation.
Right, right.
You can, but I'm also happy to do it.
Do you, I I appreciate your professional background. Okay, I just don't want to go off with multiple people going in different directions.
That's absolutely.
I would prefer to follow up on this because actually, I, yeah, in other words, I actually, yeah, in other words, I cited 7834, and he's saying that that supports his position, not mine. But but I actually conceded that that all non-union library staff would be subject to a contract under this section, not just the library director. But that doesn't mean that any of the employees report directly to the board, whether it's director or not. So if if everyone's okay with me following up with the town administrator on that, I I will, because I think until that jurisdiction gets answered, I think, I don't think we can really go further in piecing this all together.
Would that also, Chair, would that also mean that, because we had that discussion of perhaps having mediation. So it sounds to me like none of that can go forward to.
No, and the thing is, is that working conditions and everything are, as I had mentioned, that's all union stuff. And so.
Well, that's not, I don't know if that's what we're talking about. I'm not.
But where is this on the, all right, so.
No, that was the question I wanted to ask before was, will we get, this is what I was saying. I initially wanted to know when we go back to talk about that. I honestly didn't read all your emails, so I didn't know there was this, all of this stuff going on. So it sounds to me like that's got to be really ironed out before we move forward. That's all I'm saying.
In other words, union negoti, union contracts would include grievance procedures. So I think it would be premature to go, for anything to go further on that respect.
So, Mr. Chair, can you please just state for the for the board and for the public exactly what the expectations are with regards to the contract negotiations timing?
Are you talking union? My understanding was that, and I think it's public information that they're supposed to be meeting on or around October 4. That may not end things.
Is that public? Is that truly public?
I thought it was public.
I have not, I have not seen it.
No, I thought that I thought that discussions, any discussions are behind closed doors, but I don't think the date of the meeting is, you know.
Yeah, the only reason why I brought it up is because the last meeting, we talked about having mediation. But I guess, I'm not clear. I guess what I'm hearing from you is, oh, the union's going to do that. But we had a different discussion.
No, no. In other words, the the union contract will outline grievance procedures. We're not involved in those discussions and.
Point of order, we already moved past the status of contract negotiations. We're on the library director's performance review and the lady.
And I think, and I will speak with, I will table, yeah, and I'll speak with the town administrator.
Confused.
And on five chi funding requests is is outside of our purview to to fund additional.
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about that? So we do have state aid fund. If it was, we are able to do things with state aid funds like appreciation lunches or things for the library staff. Is it the terminology of the word compensation that's a problem?
I think there's specific people that would be rewarded versus a general, a general luncheon that benefits everyone and isn't a quid pro quo. And so, you know, I was, you know, our town administrator pointed out that there could be labor law repercussions for us to even attempt to try to change someone's compensation. And so I think we need to to table this and and find a solution to appreciate those who sort of went the extra mile. Yeah.
Yeah. So I did see this recently on a trustee listserv where they wanted to reward one of the librarians for going above and beyond their duties. And I believe the consensus was, it's not the board's purview to give any sort of monetary compensation, like you said, you know, to like a quid pro quo or whatever the proper terminology is. So I don't think that, as much as that was a fantastic idea, I think there may be another way we can appreciate those staff.
All right. So five H Smallstones.
Okay, very quickly, we've all discussed the remediation work that's being done right now in the, in both the children's room, the community room, community meeting room, and a few other areas. So after much deliberation and trying to find other alternative venues for the event, the Smallstones Committee decided to postpone it and then have it in the library. And we got permission from Beth. We, I mean, we were told that there were certain dates that we could start. So they're going to, after the, after the holiday, which is the third, the Grafton celebrates the holiday, they're going to start the week of the fourth. There's going to be intake day, two days, a couple of days, and then they're, you know, they're going to get everything up and running. So then the festival itself will start on the eighth, which is a Friday, and it will go until, let me see, I think it goes until, it should be one more week. I'm sorry.
Because like this, the Sunday, the seventeenth?
Yeah, it goes to Sunday, the seventeenth. Thanks.
Did you say it's going to be still at the library, though?
Yeah, it's still going to be at the library. It's going to be in the community room. And I I haven't heard how the remediation's going, but I decided I'm not going to worry about it. I'm sure it's going to go through through smoothly. Yeah. So that's, that's, that's the plan. So.
All right, awesome. All right.
That's it.
Thank you. Grafton celebrates the holidays. Debbie.
Oh, I just volunteered to do that. Someone had requested an update. I think that what we've discussed before is the plan that the Girl Scouts are still going to put their gingerbread houses on display in the historic reading room. There will be caroling out front. And we are currently brainstorming activities for inside the library. Crafts have been a challenge in the past with their, it's not a, either, we're not allowed to or it just has not gone well in the past to have volunteers run them. Beth has approached a concert penis to play holiday music. That didn't quite work out. We sort of threw out the idea, everybody loved the goats, but the goats, they go and they don't tour anymore after October.
Oh, they're so cute.
So we're kind of still.
Let's do that.
Sarah Bannister, the children's department head, is going to contact Diane Hedgecomb to see if she's available for storytelling, to have some activities. We're still kind of working through some things because everything we seem to try isn't panning out at this point.
Ours will be the best for us, he said. All right. Thank you. Aaron, policy update? Any policy update?
Yes. So from the Policy Committee met on Thursday, September 21st via Zoom at 7:00 PM, we talked about the art exhibit and display policy application. So this is specifically how people would apply for displaying their art. There wasn't a lot of discussion because it was just something that was kind of facilitating their need to do that. So Debbie is working on that. We we looked for, we looked at the material selection policy. We have a material selection policy that we've had for years that we've, you know, approved as a board. I think it was probably last in 2021. But, you know, given the state of, you know, what the censorship, I think, is a, is a big issue among libraries right now and what the library puts out and people speaking up that they don't approve of certain, you know, items at the library. So what we're doing is we're putting a lot more language in there to really spell out exactly the selection process so that there's really not a lot of ambiguity. So it's going to really turn into like a two or three-page document to probably a six or seven-page document. So we're probably going to spend a bit more time on this. I don't know that it's ready to go to to union or legal or even the board yet. But I'll talk about something towards the end regarding policy review. So next, we took a look at the find-free library policy. So we wrote one during the pandemic. And it was very specific towards the pandemic. This is a more official policy for our library to finally get an official policy for us. So it's ready to be sent to legal. And there was no union feedback on that particular policy.
All right, cool.
Our pandemic policy, there was a lot of procedural items in there about, you know, how to clean certain things, what to clean. But a lot of that was based on certain guidelines that were coming in, that were very specific from the state about COVID-19. So we want to make a more general pandemic policy. So we did discuss how that would impact staff responsibilities. But if if it ever came that we needed staff to do more cleaning and whatnot, then that would probably go to the town and they would discuss that. We looked at program policy. There was a bit of discussion about, so, sorry, we had some union feedback that expressed concern about if a program was going on that was geared towards adults and if somebody wanted to bring a child and to the, to the program, that the librarians would give them something that was appropriate for them to do outside of the program. But we just decided that it was really kind of adding a lot more responsibility on the program, you know, host, to have to do that for for children. So we took that whole section out. So I believe that one may be, I think that one's gone to legal as well. And we have a very, like a one-page display policy, some really great union feedback as well, and that one's gone to to legal. Next, we're going to look at the volunteer policy at our next meeting, which is scheduled October 11th, 2023, at 7:30 with a Zoom option. We generally like to meet at the library, but we also post Zoom as well on on the agenda. But one of the things that we kind of discussed at the tail end of the meeting is how we're bringing policy to this board, right? And historically, the board is the last group to see the policy. So Policy Committee works on these policies for, you know, a couple of months, could be a year, right, depending on if it's a new policy. And and now we have a process where it goes to, goes to the union and then to legal, or then back to the Policy Committee and then back, then back to legal. So I just tried to hash it out, but this is kind of the flow, you know, the committee to the union to legal, the board, and then approval, right? But if if any of these get stopped, it comes back to committee, right? So it doesn't make sense for the board to kind of be the last one, since we're going to be the ones that are approving this, to review it. So what we discussed is a way to kind of involve the board throughout the entire process so that when it finally comes for the board's approval, there's not a lot of, you know, like you said, workshopping, right? We want to kind of eliminate.
We would still need to do this in open meeting law. I think we need to be very careful not to be providing individual input on these things, which
Yeah.
would form a serial discussion. That would absolutely run afoul of the open meeting law.
Yeah. So what I'm proposing is sub, policy subcommittee is very transparent. We want to be transparent with what we're doing.
Gotcha.
And what we're working on. And we want to make that available to the, to the Board of Trustees, start to finish.
So individually, we could come to the subcommittee, making sure that a quorum of the whole committee isn't present, or else we'd have to post the whole committee agenda.
Right.
Our input would have to be in a, in a, in a posted setting.
Yeah. So what I was going to propose is, any feedback you have on the policy, bring it to the committee chair, and we're happy to discuss, same as, same thing we do with the union. We show them the policy, they give some feedback, and it comes back for us to discuss as the subcommittee.
And I don't know whether if we individually did that, and four of us got together and did that, whether that would still be kosher.
As long as as an individual, if he sends out, if he sends out the current policy to the committee.
Yeah.
And individually, you provide the feedback to the policy chair. And at that next meeting, that policy chair is discussing.
I don't know if that's, I don't, I'll have to look into whether that's permissible.
And the policy meetings are posted as.
Right. And so, in other words, we would bring our things individually to a posted meeting versus feeding things to him individually for then.
Might have to just stick with.
But anyway, I mean, I'll look into that. I mean.
It's not, it's not attainable because, well, we, we could totally keep.
No, I know that. I know that. Back. No, I know that. But again, we need to be cautious about some very nuanced state law. It's gotten more complicated and more nuanced, the open meeting law. I mean, yes.
Could I ask a question? Because I don't know if I'm understanding correctly. So if we post a Board of Library trustee policy subcommittee meeting, only the members of the board who are on policy subcommittee can attend, or it's a violation?
No, no, I'm saying that, I'll let you, yeah, please.
Because that's what I just heard, and it doesn't sound right.
Okay, so a quorum of a committee is one-third of this. So with who is already attending, it's open meeting. So you post it. So what I think, I'm going to offer a suggestion. If Erin includes us in the agenda of what is being discussed, and we have feedback, we can attend that meeting. And since it's already being posted, we're covered in open meeting law. But we cannot respond and get into serial discussions over email. It would just be like a notification of this is the meeting packet, whether we are going on, if that's posted online, or whether that comes up to us. But there's no discussion further than that. It's all in.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
So Stephanie, the one-third, I thought that as long as we had less than four, like I thought if we had three trustees, we're okay. But you're saying that if we, if we have three, that's a violation?
It's one-third or four, whatever is greater.
So it's greater.
It was greater. Okay, so it's four.
So I'm hearing two things. One is providing feedback at the sub, sub-policy committee meetings where other trustees want to say, oh, yeah, I'd love to provide my feedback. But the other thing that I'm proposing is, a lot of our policies are already posted. They're public record.
Right, yeah.
Anybody can review them anytime. I'm just asking that, same as we, we provide, you know, we ask feedback from the union, I want to kind of be transparent with what we're working on.
I agree with you 100% that this is, that you're trying to streamline things. And I think you're, you absolutely have the right idea to make this an efficient process so we're not just, you know, seeing it at the last minute and then looking at it for the first time in its final draft. I just want to make sure that the way in which we feed our comments to you, that we're different than a general public feeding their comments to you. Any member of the general public can feed that to you.
Yes.
But we need to be careful about feeding this, our comments to you, which lead to a quorum. I'm not saying that that's a violation. I have to, I have to look into whether that that is allowable. Yes.
A couple thoughts. I guess I'm trying to get clarity on.
May I just respond? What I would like to see, when this, when policies are brought to this board, this is what I'm trying to accomplish.
Sure, right.
All right, this is the end game.
Yeah.
Is that we're happy to do, so similar process that we did with the the meeting dates tonight. We said, you know what, there's just this minor change. We want only minor changes.
Okay.
And then we can say, yeah, we'll make that change. Great. Any major changes have to start the whole process, process back over again. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
Is everyone okay? I mean, I I hope that everyone's okay with me simply looking into whether that which you've initially proposed as a mechanism to feed things to you is okay or not.
Yep, which is letting you guys know what we're working on.
Right.
And providing those policies and draft policies.
So I was going to say, what we discussed in the meeting was me sending out our, our minutes along with, because in our meetings, we discuss what we're, which policies we're going to be working on next, and what the chair of the last, the last chair, Karen Settletelli, would do, and she would make sure, which I haven't seen lately, is when she would send out an email, she would say, please respond individually. What we're getting, I think, I don't know, open meeting law, as well as other people responding individually, just sending feedback to Erin and no one else is seeing it, then it just comes directly to us.
And I have to question whether even that's okay.
I get it.
I, yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
I think it's a great idea, but I need to question, are you okay with that?
That, so yes, you can, you can find it out. My understanding is that that's not okay, because the same, even though all the feedback's going to one person, we're all privy to the topic and then giving our information.
But it's individual.
It's not really individual. We're just not engaging in full collaboration.
And that's where, that's where the nuances, and that's where the open meeting law has gotten more nuanced.
Well, so I think the difficulty then is, because I know what you had suggested, like if you have an interest, you go to the meeting, but not everybody is going to do that. So he's not going to get the feedback.
Yeah, I mean, the individuals aren't going to be able to provide feedback.
Because we all have different schedules, you know. I just, I don't know, I.
So to your point, the last meeting, I don't, you're right, we shouldn't just rubber stamp this stuff.
Right.
Right.
But they should be substantially completed by the time they come to the board.
Right.
And and you guys should have opportunities.
Absolutely. So let me look into that. I, I, I'm leaning toward agreeing with you about what your comments are. But I want to leave no doubt about that. But I, I want to leave no doubt about that, yes.
Could I just, we don't have to discuss it, I'm just throwing it out, there is always a policy update. Perhaps there is just a standing point on the agenda where we could give policy feedback for what is working in progress. Because like, everything's posted for everybody. And so if the policy updates are being given, maybe we could also set aside five minutes for anybody to give feedback.
I think he probably wants written feedback.
You'd have to read it to give feedback, I mean, I, I can't.
No, but that's what I'm saying, but it's, it's posted, you said that there, or are you talking about new ones?
We haven't posted any of the draft policies at, at any part of the process, what I'm talking about is transparency through the whole process. So I don't even have to ask you guys for feedback, but you guys can look at this stuff at any point in time, I'm not hiding anything.
But then I'm leaning toward agreeing with you on that, that point about feeding things in, and I, I do need to look into that.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
If the policies that are in process that we've discussed at the meeting are just included with the minutes of the policy subcommittee meeting, that would be sufficient, that goes on to the website. And then you can direct the board to read the policy subcommittee minutes and then discuss it in this.
Yeah, and if that isn't being done, then maybe that's the best practice, you, you keep the drafts, as long as they're watermark. It's important that things are properly watermarked as draft documents, and if they're included with the minutes that you submit, then we could actually be reading those in real time.
It does get long, because sometimes we have the original policy as, you know, as a PDF, the draft with the changes, and then the newest iteration.
I think we're getting there.
All right, awesome, thank you for all your hard work, it's, it's a lot. All right, so directors reporting stats, you've given your report, I have no questions, it's getting late. And Beth has always said, if anyone asks any questions about anything, call her.
I did notice, it says, I'm so sorry, it says July report in the heading, but it is the August report, all the data is for August, I apologize, I missed.
All right, public input, there's no public input, next meetings are self-explanatory. And I will be going to nine C, I know, for the Schuylkill Public Library, yeah, so.
The, the next Friends, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The next meeting of the Friends of the Grafton Public Library will be August tenth at seven thirty P M.
August tenth?
Oh.
What day of the week is that?
It's always a Tuesday, and it's seven thirty P M.
All right, all right, then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion made, seconded. All right, motion made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, declare the mo- uh, any opposed, declare the motion carried, adjourned at nine fifteen.